Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council members. Before you tonight, we have a rezoned proposal. We have a public hearing for a rezoned proposal at 551 Empire Lane. And the proposal is a request to rezone a 2.35 acre parcel from the moderate-density residential, which is R2 zoning district, to the medium-density residential, R3 zoning district. So this is the property in the center of your screen outlined in red. We have the city limits boundary is the other red line on the outside. Now, this is a closer view, aerial view of the subject property with frontage on North Polk Extension as well as Empire Lane. And now, these are two-foot contour lines showing the topography on the parcel. Relatively flat on the western portion. It slopes up to about 18 percent on the eastern half of the property. It's currently a single-family home, which has been developed on the property. Surrounding, we have Britton Lane to the south, which is a subdivision which includes duplexes. We've got Quail Run to the west, Pleasant Place to the northwest, which has duplexes and a mixture of single-family residences, as well as a mobile home park to the north. Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation tells us the property is auto-urban residential. The property to the north, to the east, to the southeast is also auto-urban residential. We have a neighborhood conservation district to the west and to the south. A little excerpt from the Comprehensive Plan. Auto-urban residential designated areas are generally anticipated to be developed for low-to-moderate-density residential uses at densities between three to seven units per acre, which could include a mix of detached, single-family, townhome, and limited-scale multiple-family residential dwellings, subject to appropriate buffer yard requirements and building scale and design standards to ensure compatibility. Manufactured home parks could be appropriately permitted in this district as a conditional use, subject to the review and application of specific, well-articulated standards to ensure their compatibility. Appropriate current zoning for auto-urban residential designated areas include low-density residential, R1, R2 zoning districts, as well as R3, which is our proposal tonight. The current zoning map of the property, as you can tell, it's R2. We also have an R2 zone directly to the east, which is a one-acre parcel, R3 to the south, as well as R2 to the west. This is the proposed zoning change, changing from R2 to R3, contiguous with the R3 zoning district to the south. An excerpt from the R3 zoning district provides for an increase of the density allowed by the R2 zone by permitting different types of housing construction. It's appropriate where activity levels are moderate, terrain permits, construction of somewhat larger structures, and where public systems and neighborhood facilities can accommodate a greater intensity of land uses as guided by the Comprehensive Plan. And just the R3 zone permits a variety of residential uses, which include single-family dwellings, duplexes, twin homes, and townhouse dwellings. Conditionally permitted uses would include daycares, boarding houses, bed and breakfast, schools, churches, residential rental units, libraries. Water services for future development likely come from existing mains, water mains that are currently located east side of Polk Street. Sanitary sewer would also come from mains on Polk Street. And Hog Creek would be utilized for storm sewer collection and conveyance. There are some issues with the property that would be addressed at the time of development. We currently don't have adequate infrastructure, frontage improvements on North Polk Street as well as Empire Lane. At the time of development, Hog Creek would most likely be relocated 20 feet to the east of where it's presently located, similar to what's been done in the Britton Lane development in order to accommodate road expansion, as well as sidewalks, curb, and gutters for the development. Empire Lane's currently inadequate. It's a 19-foot wide right-of-way. If you see on the larger zoning map, you have about 1,000-foot flagpole, which accesses a large lot here. So this would be addressed at the time of development. Full frontage improvements would be required, but that would be addressed at the time of development happens on the property. I took some pictures of the property. This is from the northeast corner, looking to the southwest. This is a single-family home. We're currently on Empire Lane. Closer view. And this is at the intersection of North Polk Extension and Empire Lane, looking southeast. This is a picture from Polk Street, looking northeast. You can tell this is Hog Creek. This is the sidewalk that's adjacent to the Britton Lane development. So the applicant has conducted a neighborhood meeting, which happened on March 30. Materials are attached in your packet. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on June 8, 2011, and put forth a recommendation of approval to council. Staff gave a report to the Joint Administration Public Works Finance Committee last Monday. And recommendation from staff tonight is that you conduct a public hearing, and upon consideration of testimony presented, approve the proposed rezone ordinance. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Council members, have any questions for Mike? Walter?
Thank you, ma'am. Mike, your comment about the 19-foot right-of-way on Empire Lane, this may be you or maybe Les. Anybody have any idea how we got that? And is there physical room there to improve it on each side of the center line, if 19 has a center line?
Yep, Mike's glancing at Les.
I'm not sure how we acquired. That was, at one point, in the county. So I would imagine when it was annexed within the city, something happened there where we ended up with an inadequate right-of-way width. Now, at the time of development of the property, it would likely be that the city would try to acquire the flagpole portion. We had talked about a 50-foot roadway width on Empire Lane. And currently, it has a 21-foot wide flagpole, and a 19-foot wide right-of-way width on Empire Lane, which equates to 40 feet wide, which is still 10 feet short of inadequate right-of-way width. So we would have to acquire either that flagpole, or the roadway would be shifted to the south to accommodate the full width of a proposed street there.
So the flagpole is in addition to the right-of-way?
Yeah, the flagpole, you can see it on the screen there.
Flagpole is to the north.
Yep, it's to the north of the right-of-way. So we have that 19-foot right-of-way in Empire Lane, and then we have a 20-foot flagpole to the north of that. So both, if you combine the flagpole as well as the right-of-way width, it equates to 40 feet wide. That's not all right-of-way width. 21 feet of that, like I said, is private property. So there were some discussions of either acquiring the flagpole from its current owners, which would still create a legal lot at the end of the flagpole, because it would be a street, Empire Lane. And that's just one of our requirements, that every new piece of property that's created has to have a certain amount of public street frontage. So it would either be the ability to acquire the private flag, or we would try to shift Empire Lane to the south, onto the developer's property, in order to achieve a satisfactory right-of-way width, which we discussed as 50 feet wide.
And the cost of acquiring the flagpole would fall to the city?
Yes.
May I ask the city engineer, Public Works Director, a question?
Sure, please.
Can I ask any further comments?
Go ahead.
Well, you know, Ray has, Mike has, excuse me, Mike has covered it pretty well. It's very possible that at the time of development, that we would look at whether or not we would recommend additional right-of-way be dedicated from the subject parcel, so that we could, with acquisition of the flagpole, existing right-of-way, and in addition, perhaps on the south, get to at least a 50-foot minimum right-of-way, which is our smallest street standard. But again, that's something that's in the future, you know, when the land develops. Until such time, we would work with what right-of-way we have and go from there.
Okay.
If you, I have one other question, but this is a different topic. If somebody else has something?
Anyone else?
I just have a question about the neighboring property here. Is that a different landowner?
It is, correct. Yeah, it's about a one-acre parcel, Tom, and then the property to the east of that would be the DeSantis property, which is in a conservation easement.
So a rezon here would leave just that one little piece as R2?
Correct, correct.
Mike, a question about our notification policy. We work within a 300-foot radius of this type of question coming before the city. Is that correct?
That is state code. We double that. So we ended up, we end up sending it out to 600 feet.
Okay. And I noticed a comment in the planning and zoning meeting that renters or tenants were not notified. What's our policy on that?
Well, we send it to the, I think, I believe, what you're talking about is the Schuets, or Mobile Home Park, to the north. And we just send notice to the property owner on record, which would be Mr. Schuets, and he would be, he should distribute that to all his residents that would be affected. We don't actually have addresses for all of those people within the Mobile Home Park.
Yes, excuse me. Violent glasses.
Just a clarification, what Walter's referring to is on page four of seven of the planning and zoning hearing minutes, and it says Schuets added, meaning Jerry Schuets added, that there are 34 families living off of Empire Lane, and they were not notified at the rezon application. So do we know if those people have been informed about tonight's hearing?
We sent notice to the property owner, which is Mr. Schuets. We also post the site with public hearing notice signs, which they would drive past every day, since they do live on Empire Lane. So I would say yes, that they have been notified.
Thank you. Walter, did that answer your question?
If I may inquire of the city attorney whether or not we have any legal responsibility to tenants, as we do to property owners?
I don't believe that we do under the state code.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Thank you, Mike. Appreciate your report.
I did have one question. Sorry. Maybe this will be addressed later, but I had a question about what the construction diversion ditch along the south side of the property, there was just a comment in the application for rezon. And I didn't know what that was, and just wanted to make sure that...
So state your question again, and this is for Mike?
It's, well, I don't, I guess it's for Mike. Maybe Mike could answer this one. So within the application for rezon, number eight, it says, "Other negative impacts, potential for increased stormwater runoff the south." And then it says, "How does the applicant propose to mitigate?" And it says, "Construction diversion ditch along the south side of property."
Yeah.
So I didn't really understand what was involved there.
If you look at the contour lines, it's sloping to the south. So at the neighborhood meeting, at Planning and Zoning Commission...
So you mean like right over here?
Correct, correct. And that was just at the time of development. In order to meet our stormwater control, erosion control standards, was to construct some type of ditch, which would collect the stormwater, and it would convey it to Hog Creek.
Okay. But that's a construction issue, not really a...
That would be a time of development, correct.
Okay.
Anything else?
I did have one sort of odd question, which doesn't really affect this property, but I noticed a few times in the materials, we have different spellings of Hog Creek, and we have difference, which I already knew was the case. And then, and then we also have different names for Polk Street. And so there's Polk Exten, North Polk Extension, and then there's North, and then there's Polk Street. Is the official name still, does it still have extension in it? Or is it, or is that just something that's kind of hanging over from previous stuff?
Please.
And that can, I guess maybe that can be just addressed later, and not part of the public hearing, but it keeps coming up and it keeps...
We call it a hungry hollow, Tom, so...
We, hungry, I'll let you know. Some other time we can...
But just the clarity of having the public be aware of what part of town, what part of a street we're talking about, I think is an important point.
Exactly. I just would like at some point clarity on that, and maybe we can clean up our stuff. But anyway, that's a different, not, thanks.
So do you think there would be any confusion about what property is being discussed tonight?
I don't, I don't think so. I think people would get it.
Okay. Other questions for Mike or other city staff members? Okay. Thank you, Ken. The way I'll conduct the public hearing tonight is to first invite testimony from the applicant or their representative in support, presumably in support of the proposed rezon. Then I'll invite testimony in opposition or general testimony, and if there's cause for rebuttal subsequent to that, I'll invite the public, or the applicant's representative forward again. We'd have you state your name and address for our record. We always ask that you try not to repeat what's been said before you, and try to be concise in your remarks. I've not put a time limit on tonight's hearing, but we do ask that you be respectful of people's time. And with that, I'll open the public hearing and invite testimony first in support of the application for the proposed rezon.
My name is Larry Hodge. I'm a consulting engineer here in Moscow, and I'm here representing Carl and Karen Benelli, who are the owners of the property that's being proposed for rezon tonight. Mike explained pretty well everything that has been requested, but there are a couple things I want to point out that were discussed at the planning and zoning hearing, and want you to hear it again from us. It is a 2.35 acre parcel. It's part of a subdivision, it was called a Peterson-Williams subdivision, that our office actually did in 1992. And I think this is part of Lot 1. It was 3.35 acres. Tom, you asked about the one acre on the east side. There were some people named Courtwright that owned all of the lot, and they lived here, and they built that home that's on it now. They moved to Grangeville, sold the home, but retained the one-acre piece in the back, I suspect because they may want to move back here someday. That's what I always thought at that time anyhow. We did have a neighborhood meeting on the 30th of March. Courtwrights, along with everyone else, was notified of this meeting, and they have never contacted us or shown any interest in having their property rezoned at this time. Okay? At the neighborhood meeting, we had six neighbors that came to the meeting. I spent a reasonable amount of time, or maybe quite a bit of the time at the meeting, explaining the process that we would go through for the rezon, and the opportunities that the neighbors would have to ask questions or make comments about it at the neighborhood meeting, also at the planning and zoning public hearing, and also at the city council. So at least the neighbors that were there, I think, understand the process fairly well. There were some questions at the neighborhood meeting relative to drainage from this property. You certainly can see from the contours there, or you can imagine from the contours there, that there's a hill, a pretty good-sized, steep hill on the east edge of this property that slopes from north to south. And so that water runs down that hill. It has, probably for eons. The property that was developed just south of this, a few years ago, called Britton Lane, I believe it is, it, it has, you know, some water that comes off this hill, I think is what the problem is. And at least one or two of the structures at the very east, northeast part of that project have experienced some sort of water issues that I'm not really familiar with, but I know of them. I pointed out at the public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission that that problem could probably be resolved through development rather than exacerbated. If a ditch was placed along this south side of this property during development of it, that it would collect the water that's coming down there and probably solve the problem those people have now. There's another point. On the 8th of June, which was when the Planning and Zoning Commission met, the staff made a report to the Planning and Zoning Commission about the project. And in that report, they indicated that they felt that the project should be, the zone should be approved, but it should have a condition put on it, that no access would be allowed onto North Polk, that all access must come onto Empire Lane. And we point, they also said, as part of this, that, that there were, we're developing offset intersections along North Polk, which I will testify as an engineer is not a very good plan. I live off from a street that has an offset intersection, and it's a headache for me when I go downtown every day. So I'm not in favor of that either. But I have two objections to conditional zones. First of all, I guess philosophically, I'm opposed to them, because I feel like there's adequate controls beyond the zoning. And when we start putting conditions on a zone without, without having any idea what kind of development might go there, or what design there might be, I think those conditions are arbitrary, and they limit us to a point that we may be passing up some very good designs. As an example, I said that there is no design of anything for this property at this time, or none that I know of anyhow. I've not been asked to do any designs. But the people that own this property, I believe, it's their hope that this property might be developed someday, similar to the property just south of it, okay, where Britton Lane is. Now, I don't know that it would look exactly like that, but it would be something that had some upper-scale duplexes on it, like Britton Lane does. Britton Lane actually was converted into condominiums after it was subdivided. And it's developed into a really nice neighborhood there. But if, but if you look at this property, you could see that a road could come off from North Polk directly across from Quail Run, so that we would not have a offset intersection at all. It could move to the east around that house and on up into the hill, where we could develop on each side of that road, probably better than any other design that might come in there. So the, so I said, well, I'm philosophically opposed to it, but I also, secondly, keep in mind that this, this is a single parcel of land right now. It has one home on it. If you rezon it, nothing can happen on that property as it exists. It either, in my mind, it is either going to have to be subdivided, which you have complete control over where the roads come on in a subdivision, and how they may, may or may not go into North Polk. The second way would be that it could be developed through a planned unit development. And again, under a PUD, the city has complete control on how that access happens and where it might happen. So I don't think that it's something that needs to be attached to a zone. So I didn't see, in the last recommendation that was printed up there, that issue about adding this condition. The zoning commission agreed that it should not be added to this rezon as a condition. So, let's see. I think, I would just summarize by saying that, again, we're asking that it be rezoned from an R2 to an R3. It is in general compliance with the Comprehensive Plan. We've gone through this with the city staff. It doesn't, it doesn't present any unmitigatable impacts that we can see, may solve some problems out there. It's certainly not a spot zone. One might think that a spot zone is being created to the east of it, but I think that whether those people ever come in or not, I don't know. What we are asking is for the same opportunity to develop this land as was done adjacent to it to the south. That's, that's exactly what we're asking. And so that's my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Larry. Council, question? Okay, thank you. Is there other testimony in support of the proposed rezon? Is there testimony in opposition or general testimony?
Hi, I'm Cynthia Muscat. I live at 518 Britton Lane. My backyard is contiguous with this parcel in question. And I'm here also, I think I'm the only one from Britton Lane condo, Cove Community. I was newly-elected vice president of our little community group. And at our annual meeting, when we discussed this prior to the neighborhood meeting that six of us went to, we came to a general consensus that basically the status quo benefits us. We have, in effect, a green buffer. So, you know, I guess we're, we're looking at economic development and all that in a completely different way. Selfishly, of course, we have a great backyard, green buffer between us and some very high-density area to the north and to the west. We're, and to the south of us, hillside apartments below us is very dense, lots of traffic. The one thing I'm just going to say, it has kind of neither here nor there, but for future developments, somebody with design needs to design for cars parking, because in all of these neighborhoods, that's the one thing that, that is left out. You know, they, they don't have, our driveways hardly have enough room for us to park, let alone visitors. So it's dense already, and that's a great green buffer. So I'm just going on record saying it's, that we, as a group, said that, people were concerned that, in effect, it could potentially lower our value or perceived value, because it's denser. It's, it's more people, more traffic, more cars. The other concerns that came up at the zoning meeting that Larry touched on, I'll just reiterate, we were very concerned, some of our folks have wet backyards, so the drainage issue is, is kind of big for us. Also, that recent power line, I don't know when this photo was taken, but it's not real visible. It's, and I don't know the technical term for the super-duper mega, megawatt power line that was redone last summer. Mr. Schuets pointed out that it's one of the longest spans in Moscow, apparently. It spans from the fire station all the way up to where he lives. And it, well, it...
Top of Empire Lane.
Top of that hill there, that knoll. And at 1,500 feet, I remember it's 1,500 stuck in my brain, I don't know if that's right. But we're concerned that whoever, you know, we don't want that big, big power line to be moved closer to us, you know. I have no idea if, if it's, if it's too close to the people that already live there. You know, was that reviewed before they just did it? It's, it's huge. So the drainage and the power line were the two biggies, but in some, we, we like the status quo, the green buffer that we get by the single-family. We'd love it if it stayed R2. So that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Muscat. Is there other testimony, either in opposition or general testimony? Okay. Larry, would you care to respond on behalf of your client with regard to Ms. Muscat's comments?
I guess just, I mean, we all like green buffers. I mean, I do too, but, but people own property and have rights to develop it, and these people are just asking for the same rights that other people in the same neighborhood that are, are adjacent to them have been given. And it seems logical to do this. The questions, or the point Cynthia brought up about parking, until we get more people riding bicycles, I guess we're going to have that problem. But parking, right now, our city ordinance says that we'll have two parking spaces for every residential home in our city. And we count one of them in the garage, if you have it, and one in the driveway, if you haven't. And if you have a double-car garage and two spaces, you've doubled the parking requirement that you have. The duplexes, I don't know what, whether they have single-car garages or, I think they do on each side, maybe some of them even have double. But the garage and the parking space behind it meets our city requirements right now. I didn't design those duplexes or that subdivision, so I don't know. But the power line does, it runs along Empire Lane, is what it does. And I can't imagine it being moved or changed in any way because of this project, so... So...
Thank you.
It must be on the, the north...
Tim, hang on. Let me, let me, you have a question for Larry pertaining that, please?
May I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Mayor Cheney. The power line's on the north side of Empire Lane?
I think they are. I drove up there and I remember there, the poles are way up on top of the hill, which is right, the big white area that's up there. And it seems like they go just straight from there over. So...
You can see him there.
You can see it right there.
So, it's the south side of Empire.
Oh, yeah, right along the edge of the road there, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and with that, we're going to close the public hearing and open it up to the council for discussion. Council members, how would you like to proceed?
Well, actually, I attended the P&amp;Z meeting and so I, I don't have any questions. And I think it was thoroughly reviewed by P&amp;Z and so...
Sue, you might move your microphone down a little bit. I bet Brian can hear you back.
Well, my glasses caught on it. Almost blew up our ears, so I didn't want to... So, if there, I, I didn't hear a thundering jump at questions, so I'd be willing to make a motion if I get back to the right page. The only other thing I wanted to ask, to mention about parking is I wonder how many people actually park in their garages. If they parked in their garages, they might find some more space. So, that's... All right. Oh, you have a question again?
I park in my garage, that's all I'm...
Oh, you park in your garage?
Answering your question.
No. Good for you. Okay, where am I here? Ah, da-da-da-da-da. Can you find that first page? Sometimes technology gets a little ahead. Thank you. So, I would move that we approve the rezon ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings and that it be read by title and published by summary. Period.
Second.
You have Sue's motion and Tim's second. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Dan.
Would we like to add to that to base it on the, the reason statement and relevant criteria given by the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Thank you.
I think we should.
I accept that as an...
Well, I'd like to amend that to add that portion to the...
I accept that amendment.
Okay.
So, the second...
Okay. Good. Further discussion? Okay, hearing done. We'll start the roll call vote with you, Tim.
Aye.
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 Okay, the motion carries. And so, we have ordinance number 2011-08, an ordinance of the City of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of Idaho, providing for the zoning of a 2.35 acre parcel of land described in Section 1 of this ordinance, medium-density residential R3, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law. And so, you have based your decision to approve the ordinance on the findings of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. City Attorney, do you recommend formal adoption of the, what did they call it? It wasn't, it wasn't reason, statement of relevant criteria. They changed the language under that thing now. Let's see. Just a second here, yeah.
I thought that including it...
They base their decision on that, on the relevant facts and conclusions is what this is called here.
Oh, now it's...
On page one of three.
Third change, okay.
I think that was good enough.
Okay, very good.
Oh, I just did part two, so...
Okay, very good. Yes.
And I just wanted to comment that I thought some of the concerns that we read in the packet and heard so forth are, can be well addressed during any proposed future construction kinds of things. So, there's, I think that there's a lot of room for, you know, addressing some of those specific neighborhood questions.
And drainage especially.
Drainage was one that Larry's talked about specifically.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks all for your participation in that.